My son has a cellphone that was in my car. So we both forgot.
All right, I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order. Ruth, would you mind taking over for our missing city clerk? Can't tell you how much we appreciate you stepping in to be able to do that. Never mind. City Clerk Cohen, I called the meeting to order and asked for roll call.
Morris.
Here.
Larson.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Perkins.
Here.
McAdams.
Here.
Verbic. Favor.
Here.
Mayor Barnes.
Here.
All right, at this time, we have the Pledge of Allegiance. If everyone could stand, I'd like our new representative or a new reporter from the Northern Star who is gonna lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance today. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, moving on to Agenda Item C.
I'd like to make a motion to modify the agenda, to modify J1 and move it to Item J, J9 to J1.
To move the Manning Agenda item up to the top?
Yes.
That sounds good. So we have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Alderwoman Larson and a second by Alderman Favor. Any discussion further? Roll call.
Larson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes.
All right, excellent. Moving up to public participation, I believe we have Mr. Shadow Gentry wants to speak to us.
Technically, you have to approve the agenda after the motion.
Oh, we modified it and then we have to approve it. Beautiful. Hang on, Shadow.
Sorry.
All right, now I'll take a motion to approve the agenda as modified.
So moved.
Second.
I'll do a motion by Alderman McAdams and a second by Alderman Favor. Roll call.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes. Thank you, City Attorney Rose. Really appreciate it. All right, now, public participation. Shadow Gentry.
Good evening, Mayor Barnes. Disturbing to all the neighbors in my neighborhood and to me and my mother when we're trying to sleep because I have to get ready for work the next morning and I would like to ask for the police's, Police Department to watch the music in that neighborhood and make sure that they can turn it, turn it off at all hours. That'd be great. And I just want to thank, thank you for your support.
Thank you, Shadow. And I'm sure the Chief of Police is here, so he can take that back to his troopers. All right, moving on to Presentations. Item E, we have none. Moving on to Item F, Appointments, we have none. So moving on to the Consent Agenda. Item G, this is for the minutes of the regular City Council Meeting of August 9, 2021, plus the minutes of a special joint City Council and Finance Advisory Committee Meeting of August 16, 2021. Item 3, Accounts Payable and Payroll through August 23, 2021, in the amount of $2,427,564.38. Item 4, Investment and Bank Balance Summary through June 2021. Item 5, Year-to-Date Revenues and Expenditures through June 2021. And Item 6, Freedom of Information Act FOIA Report for July 2021. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Moved by Alderman Perkins, seconded by Alderman Favor. Roll call.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes.
Does, do we need to announce the, the total?
Seven i's, zero n's.
All right, beautiful. Agenda passes. All right. Moving on to, we've got a public hearing, which is Agenda Item H. I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting to, or call the public hearing at, what is today's time? 6:05? 6:06? Let's see here. Yeah, so we've got a public hearing notice for the submittal of a Rebuild Illinois Grant Application for a Public Transportation Capital Assistance Grant as required under the Illinois Department of Transportation's General Authority to make such grants. Is there anyone in attendance wishing to speak on this item? Hearing, none. Counsel, any questions? We're gonna cover a lot of this. All right, hearing, none. Then at this time, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public meeting at 6:06. Do I need a roll call for that? Nope, perfect. All right, Item, or Agenda Item I, Considerations, we have none. Now, Agenda Item J, Resolutions. Let me get to the modified. We have Resolution 2021-078, authorizing a sales tax sharing agreement with Brad Manning Ford. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman McAdams, seconded by Alderman Smith. City Manager Nicholas.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for moving this up, City Council. As you can tell by the background, what's before you tonight is a sales tax sharing agreement with Brad Manning Ford. Brad Manning Ford, as I mentioned in the background, is one of our oldest and most revered businesses in the city of DeKalb. Been operating in the city of DeKalb for 65 years, four generations. And the, the occasion has its roots going back into a successful acquisition by Brad Manning Ford in December of 2020 of the, the exclusive rights to the assets for Sycamore Ford. And as a result of that, they are the exclusive Ford dealership within DeKalb County. And the merger of the assets has helped the, the business and it also has garnered some attention from other municipalities that are interested in, in gathering the sales tax generated by this, this very successful dealership to their community. We understand the business part of this, and so what's before you tonight is a straightforward business proposition. The mayor and I have been talking with Pat Manning, who's in the audience here tonight, and we thank Pat for being here, and his sons, Ben and Patrick, for some weeks now. And what we are proposing to you tonight, with our strong support, is, is a pretty straightforward agreement. And I will just briefly read through the, the terms and then answer any questions you may have. So, the resolution that's before you tonight describes a 10-year incentive agreement. This involves these, these terms, a 50-50 split of the aggregate 1% sales tax proceeds for all sales generated. The sales tax sharing does not begin until a temporary occupancy permit is issued for a proposed addition to the parts and service portion of, of the facility down at 402 Manning Drive. And I put a little more detail about that, that particular facility in the background, but I should say for the record tonight that there is, there's interest in expanding the, that portion of the facility that deals with parts and service, which is something that can be augmented through internet sales, and it's been fairly successful in, in the past year in particular. And this agreement also will extend to 10 years or longer until the first of one of these things happens, that a total of $1,675,307 is reached. And that's approximately what will be generated by our estimation, our, our joint estimation of the 1% sales tax over the 10 years, based on a pretty conservative view of a 2% annual increase in sales and, and the like. And we came up with that number. However, as we've known over the last year, you never know what's gonna happen. COVID happened. And there'll probably be another business cycle or two change in the next 10 years. So we, we certainly are, are very keen on having the, the dealership in DeKalb. And what we propose is until that, that amount is reached, or 10 years, or the possibility of two more extensions of five years apiece, basically, there's a 20-year window here to, to reach that amount. And we thought that was fair and would take in, in our, our limited vision, whatever might happen in, in the years ahead. The Manning name I said in the background, I'll, I'll say it here, it came easy to say that it's been baked into our DeKalb community and, and we, at the staff level, strongly support this and hope you will as well. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. Questions from Counsel? All right. I just want to, oh, Alderman McAdams.
Yeah, I did want to say it would be a devastating effect for Fourth Street redevelopment if we were to lose this business. It's the cornerstone of our Fourth Street business corridor, and I would absolutely urge the rest of the Counsel to support it as well.
Alderwoman Morris?
I guess I would just say that, you know, we want to be cognizant of the perceptions of other businesses as we make this decision, and that other businesses may feel, to some degree, as if they deserve the same. And so I think that that is a concern that I just want us to be aware of as we move forward with this.
Any other comments? Alderman Favor.
So, just a couple of comments. One would be, obviously, the, the manner in which Manning came to DeKalb is exactly what we're talking about now. They purchased another facility, and it would be easy to, to conceive that they might be attracted to move to another community. So there is so much competition for the tax dollars that we get from the property tax as well as the sales tax, that we need to, again, make DeKalb as business-friendly so that we can all have an equitable share of the tax dollars in the, that incentive. I'm appreciative, again, that it's not, you know, it's not DeKalb giving away 100%. It's a 50-50 sharing, which I think is a fair consideration. Yeah, it just, it just, I think it just highlights, again, how competitive the communities around DeKalb are right now for the tax dollars. And we need to remember that as we're looking at other businesses, as we're trying to make DeKalb more attractive to other companies wanting to come to DeKalb, that we, we really want to be the business-friendly, attractive community that they come and set up business. Again, the business has been here for over 50, 56 years, or, sorry, 65 years. So the amount of revenue and taxes and, that's been put into the community, and I was actually in, thinking about, like, all the Little League baseball teams that have been sponsored, and all the soccer teams that have been sponsored, and coaching from, you know, employees at the, at the dealership, they're part of our community. So I highly recommend moving forward with this.
Alderwoman Larson?
I, I echo the same thoughts. And just another added thing, since this doesn't start until the, you're actually occupying this new building, you're already reinvesting in DeKalb before it ever starts by building a new facility next to the one, so that you'll have your, your parts department enlarged there. So that just tells me all over again, your commitment to this city. So I would highly recommend voting yes as well.
Okay. I just want to comment, you know, you guys run an incredible business. And the fact you're multi-generational, what is it, three generations, right? Four, four generations. That's, that's almost unheard of. So I think it's just a testament to your all's business acumen, and the business that you've been able to run, to be able to pass that down generation after generation, and to be able to be in DeKalb for as many years as you have. I just want to say I'm proud to, to know that our community can have a business like you and a business that chooses to stay in DeKalb. So thank you very much for coming to us. Thank you very much for working with us on figuring out how we can come up with a situation that allows us to keep Manning Ford here in DeKalb. So with that, roll call.
McAdams.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes.
Seven i's, zero n's.
Resolution passes. Excellent. And Mr. Manning, we know you're a busy man. Feel free to leave at this time. You have no obligation to stay whatsoever. All right, and just for clarification, our modification of the agenda, we just bumped everything down one item number, right? Okay. So moving on to Resolution Number 2, Resolution 2021-070, authorizing an American Rescue Plan grant to the DeKalb Park District in the amount not to exceed $50,000. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman McAdams, seconded by Alderwoman Larson. City Manager.
Thank you. We've had some conversation about the American Rescue Plan here over the last month and a half or so, three different council meetings, and one of the things that was pointed out early on was the, the types of uses that the dollars could be put to, both for the city and also for, the acronym is NEUs, Non-Entitlement Units, which are principally governmental units, but not just governmental units. And there are a couple of general considerations, and one is that they, they are serving not only the whole community, but there is a particular part of their range of services that is in assistance to underserved persons, lower income, other, other ways in which they, they might be underserved historically in a particular community. And the Park District certainly has been doing that by building and remodeling and upgrading parks and, all around town. The Welch Park, and the AGN neighborhood is certainly one part of that. So the DeKalb Park District has, in a number of ways, the ability to qualify. The, the other is that they had suffered seriously in terms of revenue losses in 2020. Direct federal dollars do not go to the NEUs. They go through either a county or the city. And we're considered a metropolitan city, much smaller scale than Chicago, but we're both metropolitan cities, and so we get to decide if we want to share some of the federal money that we're gonna be getting with the NEUs. We just, a couple of weeks ago, shared some money with the Kishawaki Water Reclamation District for the losses they had suffered in service to our community. And what's before you tonight is an ARP grant request of $50,000 to offset, or, or up to $50,000, offset the cost of, of security cameras that would be installed in Welch Park and other, other community and, and neighborhood parks around the community. And we support that and hope you will as well.
Counsel. Questions, comments? Alderwoman Larson.
So these cameras would, if, if a crime was committed and caught on the camera, these cameras and footage would be available for the police to use?
We're, we're gonna ask that they be integrated with our, our technology so that there's an easy transference of images and, and response.
Okay.
Any other comments, questions? All right, hearing, none. Roll call.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes.
Seven i's, zero n's.
Resolution passes. And I'll extend the same courtesy to our members of the Park District, if you would like to leave at this point. Thanks for coming out in case we had any questions, but no need to stick around. You betcha. Thank you. All right, Resolution Number 3, Resolution 2021-071, authorizing the negotiation and execution of a municipal electrical aggregation agreement for residential electricity for a period not to exceed 36 months. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderwoman Morris. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. So the question is to aggregate or not to aggregate. Here's what that means. So some years ago, and I, I don't recall exactly when, the state legislature passed legislation that would allow communities to give their ratepayers, their residents, who are also ratepayers of ComEd, the ability to choose the, the energy source. The transmission system is still that of Exelon and ComEd, but the, the actual firm wielding the power could be ComEd, it could be others. For the last three years, our residents have had the option of working with Dynegy. The system that the legislature set up is an opt-out system, so it, sometimes it's the other way around. It's opt-out here, meaning that our residents, if, if you were to support this option again, would, after the, the market tells us within a certain prescribed period of time what the rates are, the competitive rates on, on a particular given day, the, if the rate is lower for Dynegy or any other company, then you would automatically, if you're a resident of DeKalb or business in DeKalb, be their customer for a year until we do this again. Or you can opt out and say, I, I like ComEd, I want to stay with ComEd. This is, ComEd will still show up if your wires go down and so forth, but this has to do with the rate that you pay on your monthly bill. So at this point, what this resolution authorizes is for me to work with our agents, Rock River Energy Services, to see quotes from various other energy suppliers. There is a prescribed ICC rule for how that's done, and we would follow those rules, and then we would make an announcement to you. And if you agree with what we've achieved, then notice goes to our customer, or to the customers of our local energy service, and, and they will have an opportunity to opt out or not. As, as I mentioned in the background, right now, the Dynegy rate is very close to the ComEd rate, so we'll see what the market is doing, if you're interested in participating. And I, I would recommend that we give it a try, see, see where we are.
Questions from Counsel? Hearing, none. Roll call.
Morris.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes.
Seven i's, zero n's.
Resolution passes. And I'll extend the same courtesy to our members of the Park District, if you would like to leave at this point. Thanks for coming out in case we had any questions, but no need to stick around. You betcha. Thank you. All right, Resolution Number 3, Resolution 2021-071, authorizing the negotiation and execution of a municipal electrical aggregation agreement for residential electricity for a period not to exceed 36 months. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderwoman Morris. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. So the question is to aggregate or not to aggregate. Here's what that means. So some years ago, and I, I don't recall exactly when, the state legislature passed legislation that would allow communities to give their ratepayers, their residents, who are also ratepayers of ComEd, the ability to choose the, the energy source. The transmission system is still that of Exelon and ComEd, but the, the actual firm wielding the power could be ComEd, it could be others. For the last three years, our residents have had the option of working with Dynegy. The system that the legislature set up is an opt-out system, so it, sometimes it's the other way around. It's opt-out here, meaning that our residents, if, if you were to support this option again, would, after the, the market tells us within a certain prescribed period of time what the rates are, the competitive rates on, on a particular given day, the, if the rate is lower for Dynegy or any other company, then you would automatically, if you're a resident of DeKalb or business in DeKalb, be their customer for a year until we do this again. Or you can opt out and say, I, I like ComEd, I want to stay with ComEd. This is, ComEd will still show up if your wires go down and so forth, but this has to do with the rate that you pay on your monthly bill. So at this point, what this resolution authorizes is for me to work with our agents, Rock River Energy Services, to see quotes from various other energy suppliers. There is a prescribed ICC rule for how that's done, and we would follow those rules, and then we would make an announcement to you. And if you agree with what we've achieved, then notice goes to our customer, or to the customers of our local energy service, and, and they will have an opportunity to opt out or not. As, as I mentioned in the background, right now, the Dynegy rate is very close to the ComEd rate, so we'll see what the market is doing, if you're interested in participating. And I, I would recommend that we give it a try, see, see where we are.
Questions from Counsel? Hearing, none. Roll call.
Morris.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes.
Seven i's, zero n's.
Resolution passes. And I'll extend the same courtesy to our members of the Park District, if you would like to leave at this point. Thanks for coming out in case we had any questions, but no need to stick around. You betcha. Thank you. All right, Resolution Number 3, Resolution 2021-071, authorizing the negotiation and execution of a municipal electrical aggregation agreement for residential electricity for a period not to exceed 36 months. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderwoman Morris. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. So the question is to aggregate or not to aggregate. Here's what that means. So some years ago, and I, I don't recall exactly when, the state legislature passed legislation that would allow communities to give their ratepayers, their residents, who are also ratepayers of ComEd, the ability to choose the, the energy source. The transmission system is still that of Exelon and ComEd, but the, the actual firm wielding the power could be ComEd, it could be others. For the last three years, our residents have had the option of working with Dynegy. The system that the legislature set up is an opt-out system, so it, sometimes it's the other way around. It's opt-out here, meaning that our residents, if, if you were to support this option again, would, after the, the market tells us within a certain prescribed period of time what the rates are, the competitive rates on, on a particular given day, the, if the rate is lower for Dynegy or any other company, then you would automatically, if you're a resident of DeKalb or business in DeKalb, be their customer for a year until we do this again. Or you can opt out and say, I, I like ComEd, I want to stay with ComEd. This is, ComEd will still show up if your wires go down and so forth, but this has to do with the rate that you pay on your monthly bill. So at this point, what this resolution authorizes is for me to work with our agents, Rock River Energy Services, to see quotes from various other energy suppliers. There is a prescribed ICC rule for how that's done, and we would follow those rules, and then we would make an announcement to you. And if you agree with what we've achieved, then notice goes to our customer, or to the customers of our local energy service, and, and they will have an opportunity to opt out or not. As, as I mentioned in the background, right now, the Dynegy rate is very close to the ComEd rate, so we'll see what the market is doing, if you're interested in participating. And I, I would recommend that we give it a try, see, see where we are.
Questions from Counsel? Questions from Counsel? Questions from Counsel? Questions from Counsel? Hearing, none. Roll call. Hearing, none. Roll call. Hearing, none. Roll call. Hearing, none. Roll call.
Morris. 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 Morris.
Yes. 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 Yes.
Larson. 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 Larson.
Yes. 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 Yes.
Smith. 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 Smith.
Yes. 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 Yes.
Perkins. 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 Perkins.
Yes. 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 Yes.
McAdams. 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 McAdams.
Yes. 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 Yes.
Mayor Barnes. Mayor Barnes. Mayor Barnes. Mayor Barnes.
Yes. 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 Yes.
Seven i's, zero n's. Seven i's, zero n's. Seven i's, zero n's. Seven i's, zero n's.
Resolution passes. And I'll extend the same courtesy to our members of the Park District, if you would like to leave at this point. Thanks for coming out in case we had any questions, but no need to stick around. Resolution passes. And I'll extend the same courtesy to our members of the Park District, if you would like to leave at this point. Thanks for coming out in case we had any questions, but no need to stick around. Resolution passes. And I'll extend the same courtesy to our members of the Park District, if you would like to leave at this point. Thanks for coming out in case we had any questions, but no need to stick around. Resolution passes. And I'll extend the same courtesy to our members of the Park District, if you would like to leave at this point. Thanks for coming out in case we had any questions, but no need to stick around. Questions from Counsel? You betcha. Thank you. All right, Resolution Number 3, Resolution 2021-071, authorizing the negotiation and execution of a municipal electrical aggregation agreement for residential electricity for a period not to exceed 36 months. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor? You betcha. Thank you. All right, Resolution Number 3, Resolution 2021-071, authorizing the negotiation and execution of a municipal electrical aggregation agreement for residential electricity for a period not to exceed 36 months. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor? You betcha. Thank you. All right, Resolution Number 3, Resolution 2021-071, authorizing the negotiation and execution of a municipal electrical aggregation agreement for residential electricity for a period not to exceed 36 months. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor? You betcha. Thank you. All right, Resolution Number 3, Resolution 2021-071, authorizing the negotiation and execution of a municipal electrical aggregation agreement for residential electricity for a period not to exceed 36 months. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor? Hearing, none. Roll call.
Morris.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes.
Seven i's, zero n's.
Resolution passes. And I'll extend the same courtesy to our members of the Park District, if you would like to leave at this point. Thanks for coming out in case we had any questions, but no need to stick around.
So moved. So moved. So moved. So moved.
Second. 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 Second.
Moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderwoman Morris. City Manager. Moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderwoman Morris. City Manager. Moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderwoman Morris. City Manager. Moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderwoman Morris. City Manager. You betcha. Thank you. All right, Resolution Number 3, Resolution 2021-071, authorizing the negotiation and execution of a municipal electrical aggregation agreement for residential electricity for a period not to exceed 36 months. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderwoman Morris. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. This item and the next resolution relate, in a general way, to the public hearing that was held at the top of the meeting tonight. And this one in particular, the state law requires that to receive proceeds from the Rebuild Illinois Capital Grant Program, we need to have a public hearing in which the public can show up and, and, and provide reasons or questions about the use of, as I explained in the background, about $12 million in Rebuild Illinois capital funding that can come our way to help with the, the architectural, engineering, and construction costs that are associated with the new transit, maintenance, and operations facility. That's a lot of money. A public hearing is, is certainly in order, but more specifically, we, there is a timeline for this. We're, we're at that point where we, we need to qualify for, to follow through and let, let them know, we really want this $12 million. We have to get going and get designing and get picking the site and so forth. So we recommend, apart from the next item and, and as to where and, and when and so forth, that we, we say we're interested. That's basically what this resolution is. Yes, we, we'd love to participate in that program.
Counsel. Comments? Hearing, none. Roll call.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes.
Seven i's, zero n's.
Resolution passes. All right, Resolution 6, 2021-074, authorizing a professional services agreement with StanTech Architecture Incorporated for site selection services on behalf of a new transit facility in the amount not to exceed $264,153. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderwoman McAdams. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. StanTech has a lot of experience in the engineering field, and, and considerable amount of that has been devoted to our transit facilities and transit operations, and been very successful at that. Back in 2019, about mid-year, an earlier council selected StanTech to begin the process, and it's, we just went through a, a resolution referring to the state sources of money, so we have state thresholds to meet, to qualify for the money that ultimately pays for a transit facility. And early on, the, the community gets to, to review sites and then make a selection, and then there are, of course, estimates of costs at that particular site, not to mention all the other things that go with the selection of a, of a site for a transit facility, which in our estimation, and from talking with StanTech and others, is somewhere around a 15-acre proposition for a And as you know, a couple meetings ago, you approved a water main replacement project, twenty-eight-hundred feet of water main replacement on Joanne Lane, and there needs to be oversight, which means not just looking at the plan, saying, "Yeah, these plans look good." It means every day, day in and day out, as long as the contractor's working, and even when the contractor's not working, to make sure that the main is put in, proper connection is joint-to-joint, proper depth, proper backfilling, if there's interference with driveways and sidewalks, all that work. And so that's what is before you tonight, a contract with Fair Graham, who has given us a price which is within, the average is somewhere between five and seven percent for that kind of engineering and as well as design work, and we recommend their price for that work.
Any comments, questions, council? This is exciting, just infrastructure improvement, the new road, people in Joanne getting a lot of love from the city right now, which is great.
Mm-hmm.
All right, roll calls.
Larson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes.
Seven i's, zero nays.
Resolution passes. All right, resolution number five, resolution two zero two one dash zero seven three, authorizing the submittal of a Rebuild Illinois Grant application for a public transportation capital assistance grant under the Illinois Department of Transportation's general authority to make such grants. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Perkins, seconded by Alderman McAdams, City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. This item and the next resolution relate, in a general way, to the public hearing that was held at the top of the meeting tonight. And this one in particular, the state law requires that to receive proceeds from the Rebuild Illinois Capital Grant Program, we need to have a public hearing in which the public can show up and provide reasons or questions about the use of, as I explained in the background, about twelve million dollars in Rebuild Illinois capital funding that can come our way to help with the architectural, engineering, and construction costs that are associated with the new transit, maintenance, and operations facility. That's a lot of money. A public hearing is certainly in order, but more specifically, we, there is a timeline for this. We're at that point where we need to qualify for, to follow through and let them know, "We really want this twelve million." We have to get going and get designing and get picking the site and so forth. So we recommend, apart from the next item and as to where and when and so forth, that we say we're interested. That's basically what this resolution is. Yes, we'd love to participate in that program.
Counsel, comments? Hearing none, roll call.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes.
Seven i's, zero nays.
Resolution passes. All right, resolution six, two zero two one dash zero seven four, authorizing a professional services agreement with StanTech Architecture Incorporated for site selection services on behalf of a new transit facility in the amount not to exceed two-hundred-and-sixty-four-thousand-one-hundred-and-fifty-three dollars. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman McAdams, City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. StanTech has a lot of experience in the engineering field, and a considerable amount of that has been devoted to our transit facilities and transit operations, and been very successful at that. Back in two thousand nineteen, about mid-year, earlier council selected StanTech to begin the process, and it's, we just went through a resolution referring to the state sources of money, so we have state thresholds to meet to qualify for the money that ultimately pays for a transit facility. And early on, the community gets to review sites and then make a selection, and then there are, of course, estimates of costs at that particular site, not to mention all the other things that go with the selection of a site for a transit facility, which in our estimation, and from talking with StanTech and others, is somewhere around a fifteen-acre proposition for a community our size and for the bus operation we have now and what we project to have in the next thirty, forty years. Whatever the size of the buses, we need a facility that they can drive through, that there will be plenty of indoor space for them to be stored and also repaired. So in December of twenty, we brought some locations to the council for a new transit facility. There are a couple over toward the Barbara Green Sycamore Road area. They weren't our property, they were owned by others. And then there was one that was off of Dresser Road. It's a thirty-acre site, and about fifteen acres of that was proposed as the other. That's just east of the Station Three, near our water tower in that general vicinity. And there were issues there, but there are issues at all the sites. The one issue that we didn't have there was, we owned the property, we didn't have to pay a million dollars or whatever the number would be for that kind of acreage. So the council directed us to then go to the next step, which, again, according to state protocols, is a very general conceptual review of the site issues, as well as the transit, the roadway impacts, the, they call it deadheading, so from where you start to where you get to pick up the customers, what's the wear and tear on the roads, what are the efficiencies from the customer's standpoint, a dozen checklist things. And the council said, "Okay, we'll pick that site, and I'll come back with a contract for the further delineation of what that is." So about three months later, we came back in April of this year, but at that time, the council felt they were not ready to make a decision on Dresser Road site, and should, we should go back and bring forward a new professional services agreement, which would ask StanTech to specifically bring in some alternatives to the Dresser Road site, as well as the Dresser Road site, and propose that for us. So StanTech has suggested their cost for this work, which is about two-hundred-and-sixty-four-thousand-one-hundred-and-fifty-three dollars, and that's what's before you tonight. We want to move forward, so if it's the council's pleasure to do so, we would recommend that you support this contract.
Counsel, questions, comments? Oh, Alderwoman Morris was poised, so.
I'm pointing it. I'd rather hear, I want to hear everyone's feedback, very much so. So I'd rather, please go first.
All right, Alderman Smith.
Bill, are we under a time constraint here? I know we, this is grant money we've received, but we're getting down to the deadline, am I not correct?
Yeah, and, so we don't have the twelve million. You just voted, "Yeah, we like that idea," but we'll, it will, we'll process what you did, what you do tonight, and what you did at the last resolution, and inform the state, and then eventually they get it into the quay. You know the process, it takes a while, it doesn't all come in one check and all that. But to go much further, we certainly need to have the design, general conceptual design based on a site assessment that makes sense to you.
Is there a timeframe that we're looking at? I mean.
It's not a specific month, but as I mentioned in the last resolution, it was time for us to let them know that we want to do something. So now we're sort of halfway in to, we will qualify for the twelve million, I'm fairly confident, but if we don't show progress toward finding at least a contractor or a, an engineering services firm to do this, then they'll begin to wonder if we're serious about this. And I don't know how to put, Marcus this year, I don't know how to put a date on that, but I suspect by the end of the year, if we haven't made some progress, then they'll, sometime in the, by the end of this state fiscal year, which is into next year, June thirtieth, we'll hear from somebody.
That's what I was worrying, I don't want us to lose twelve million dollars.
Neither do I.
Okay.
So what I'm thinking is, the worst possible outcome of this resolution, in light of the fact that we've already reviewed this a couple times now, the worst possible outcome here is that we conclude their site selection services with the site that we've already turned down. You see what I'm saying? So if we, if they do their site selection survey, and we get to the final decision, and we go, "Oh, okay, I guess that Dresser Road spot wasn't too bad after all." Does that make sense, what I'm saying?
Yeah.
City Manager, okay. So on that, I just want to hear from us, do we still feel the same way about that Dresser Road location? And I believe if it was in April, that we have new council members who haven't weighed in on this, is that just one? But I guess I'd like feedback on that. So originally, we had said, "Yeah, okay, go ahead and pursue consideration of a Dresser Road site for a transportation location." We told them to pursue it in maybe December, and then in April, we were like, "Ew, I don't think so." We just couldn't really imagine that in that space anymore. And so I'd like to make sure that that's really where we're still at, before we engage this firm to the tune of two-hundred-and-sixty-four thousand dollars, to reassess everything. I just want to make sure we don't come back to the same conclusion.
Maybe a little clarification for us new people on here. So before that site on Dresser Road was selected, it's a site, we own the property, so we don't have to buy it. It's large, so there's thirty-eight acres there, so we could pretty much design and do whatever we want. It's close to Annie Glidden North, which there's a large population there that would take advantage of these services, and when you talk about deadheading, it seems like it's close to that rather than way out on Barbara Green, right? It seems like the ideal spot, so I'm just curious, why did we not approve it?
At the time, and members of the council who are here can certainly chime in, but at the time, a couple of things were brought up, and there really wasn't time for much discussion, and Zach Hill is here tonight, so I know he can address. One of the things, there certainly is a wet area just to the east of the drive that goes back to Station Three and the water tower.
What's wet area, I mean? Because it looks like mowed lawns to me. Like what?
Well, after the, well, we didn't get the torrential rain that they got east of here on Saturday, but if we'd had that, it would have been wet, and it would have been, it would have looked like a wet retention pond. But there is a solution for that, and the solution is at hand, actually, and there's been some conceptual consideration of what would be required. And what's happened over many years, generations, is that old field tile and other conveying pipe has failed, and so that now is a locked area, and there's no release to, it wants to go to the rivers where it wants to go in a natural way. And there's a natural way to the north, but what is necessary is to collect it and take it in some pretty large precast pipe and so forth, and that solves the drainage problem. The fill that's needed is sitting right now in piles, waiting for us at, near the county home, which had just done substantial addition, and we have, so far as I know, and Zach, you can help me with this, first dibs on that. It's also an area, once filled, and once the drainage issue is solved, not only does that afford us the opportunity to build a transit center if you so desire, but it also enables us to complete the bike path and walkway that we've been so desirous of from Annie Glidden and Dresser East to the high school, to help people who are coming from Eden's Garden and are walking north along Annie Glidden. So there are a lot of things that that would help with, but the main thing is, it's the right size, it's owned by us, and as you said, Mayor, it's a short drive, less than a mile from the epicenter of the largest amount of our consumer base for the system that we have, and will continue to be. So it, yeah, it serves, and if the roadway, if the normal, and of course, the Dresser have to be built up, that's a heck of a lot less in terms of roadway improvements than what it would take to go all the way out to, say, Pleasant Street, which is another possibility, or further afield, to have those buses running back and forth, so many trips a day. And so all these things, now StanTech had originally identified that as one of the sites, so they've already done some work. Probably two-thirds of this amount would have to be done anyway, it's the next step, which is to go deeper into the design. I've just been describing, me, a non-engineer, what it might take to solve the drainage problem or the fill issue. There are another twenty things that they have to seriously look at in detail. That would be that two-thirds of this, but another hundred thousand or thereabouts would have been spent searching for another site and starting at the beginning. And that's where I, and I said so back in April, I said, "I thought the best bang for our buck was to proceed with the Dresser Road site." And I'll repeat that tonight since you asked, and maybe the way to deal with this is, because we don't have the opportunity to negotiate this on the floor, there's something before you. You could vote this, and then you could give the City Manager, if you're so inclined, the authority to negotiate something, if you feel the Dresser Road site is doable, where we negotiate a revision to the contract for a substantial amount less, to focus on that and get to the detailed engineering that we need. To bring back to you, you could still wash it out, but I think that's the way possibly to go.
Alderwoman Morris?
So as I remember, the three council members that had the strongest opinions against this were Alderman Verbic, Second Ward Alderman, who's no longer on council, and Alderman Smith. And so I think that their primary concerns, as I remembered them, were concerns about, you know, buses being near a heavily trafficked, you know, kids' space, which I did not personally feel the same way about that. I live in that, I live off of Dresser Road, and I've walked down Dresser Road with no sidewalks, with my kids, and found that the buses are the safest people driving, you know, so I didn't really echo that concern specifically. You know, there were other, I think my personal concerns, I had concerns, but I felt like they were minimal. My concerns were that that one, there's a little running space there, that's just about the only space that is, has trees and is runnable or bikeable in the whole First Ward, basically. I know we have stuff on Katz, you know, from Katz Park and stuff, but, so that was my concern, and like the physical environment of the space, but to me, it wasn't a dealbreaker. You know, I know there had been less desirable locations suggested previously, and I was like, "No, no, not that spot." But this spot, I felt like I could deal with, I felt like it would be an acceptable spot. But I think Alderman Verbic was really concerned about the ingress and egress, if those are the right words, of the buses and traffic around there, he was really concerned about that. Do you have any concerns, Alderman Smith, that you wanted to point out? Was I wrong?
No, you're absolutely right. I think our biggest concern was, you know, as this progresses, this is federal money, so we're going to have to do soil testing, I mean, I think that's.
Everything, yeah.
What we're going to have StanTech do is going to resolve what I was thinking, is to address those issues. You know, I believe there's a clogged, if I heard understand right, there's a clogged sewer pipe out there, that's probably the biggest problem. I mean, there was another area, I think Eden Gardens, that they cleaned out, was clogged. I think Zach found one over there, that seemed to help resolve the problem. So I'm for them going in and have a look at that site now. I think, I know who's going to do it, I have the utmost confidence in them. They'll dig through the, everything and find out, I think, resolve our problem. So I just want to go in that, that was the biggest concern I heard from, was the water in the area. So as long as you got a lot of fill, and I think you do, I think we're good.
Alderman McAdams?
Yeah, I didn't feel like we were rejecting Dresser as much as we were making sure that we were doing our due diligence and making sure it's the right spot, because we're making a really big historic move, and we want to do something that looks good ten years from now, fifteen years from now. We didn't want to just rush in and do it because it made sense for today, but looking at it from a longer perspective. I'm going to vote yes on this, just because I want to do our due diligence and make sure that we are making the right choice for future generations of the Kalbians who are not here to speak.
Alderman Perkins?
I'll echo on Alderman McAdams' thoughts as well, because it wasn't so much to me a rejection of Dresser as much as it was, there were a lot of questions that were raised. Then the level of detail that we had in those questions, we really, there were a lot of more, there were more questions than answers. So I guess from this, will deliverable be a recommendation of multiple sites with a deeper dive into the associated costs with that, with those sites?
There will be an identification of multiple sites for certain, and some very general estimate of development costs. Whether it will be a strong recommendation is, we'll leave that to their judgment. I mean, if they do their due diligence, as you've all recommended, then they'll look hard, too, and maybe they'll think otherwise, but they actually did this once, so they did this in two thousand nineteen and two thousand twenty. And the reason they came to you with the recommendation was not that they thought all answers, all questions had been answered, that was going to be the next contract, right? They were going to do that for a million dollars, remember? That's one of the reasons we choked on this, but they said, "No, we're going, now we're going to do that deep dive." So this is a general estimation. They can, they've looked at the map, believe me, and it has to be within the city limits for us to qualify, otherwise it becomes a county transit center or whatever. It's going to be a City of DeKalb Transit Center, it's going to be somewhere that's currently in the city limits, and it just, so they'll look at the same things again, and they'll probably come back and say, "Well, I don't want to prejudge," but I think unless some new information has come in, they're being professional about it, they're going to say, "Yeah, here are three sites, and here are the pros and cons of them," and that's what you'll get, you'll get that. And they may say, "This is probably all things in, this is probably for the dollars, for the impacts on neighborhoods and local people, this is the best." They might, they might say that, I can't say.
Just clarification, if you don't mind, this probably comes off as snarky, and it's not meant to be at all. I just want clarification. So what we did before, let's say it was a quarter million dollars before they did the study, they recommended the Dresser Road section, we're asking them to do the same thing again. So we're going to spend another quarter million dollars to have them do the same thing again and most likely recommend Dresser?
Now, I did say earlier, it's, some part of this is some additional work that they would be doing, for instance, on the Dresser site, they could do that, but there's some share, I wasn't able to divine what that was, but let's say it's a third or up to a half of this price, that would be all new information that would be necessary one way or another.
Alderwoman Larson?
Where were the other two sites that we don't know? Why did they recommend?
Yeah, they're not, they're not available anymore. Both of them are county sites, and they're not interested in selling them for this, they would rather try to, they're on either side of the multiplex theater complex.
Okay, sure.
There are two sites that are undeveloped, and at the time, now this is a year and a half ago, they said, "No, we still feel that these could develop for commercial purposes, which would be a better return to us than to have a public facility that's off the tax rolls and, you know, so on and so forth."
So does the city own any new property, since they did it last time?
We don't have any property that, in the city limits right now, of that size.
Okay.
Together, we've got, you know, a little bit here, a little bit there, half an acre here, half an acre, but fifteen acres minimum is what they said.
Yeah, okay, okay.
Alderwoman Morris?
Yeah, so, I mean, we could annex land, too, right? That's not beyond possible.
We can annex and pay for it, because if it's not in the city, they would pay for it. So thirty thousand an acre, plus.
How big is the site on Dresser?
It's thirty acres with fifteen that would be up, you know, further up, it'd be the southern half of that, basically.
I think the only other concern that I had that I forgot to mention just now was just how gross buses are, and, you know, the fumes and the exhaust that is really, really kind of makes a space less desirable for living. And when I brought that up, we got to, we, it was mentioned that the goal was to move toward hybrid buses, and Marcus Cox is nodding his head. So I feel like if we're moving toward hybrid buses, that changes the dynamic dramatically, but if we're talking. But if we're talking that that won't happen for a number of years, that still becomes an issue for a number of years.
Mayor, we've got two people on our staff who probably can speak through the details.
Sure, Scott. Or Zach, sorry. It's the Scott-Zach-Zach Gil. It throws me sometimes.
We're going to hire a Scott Gil and you guys will be totally.
I know.
I just wanted to, real quick, Mr. Mayor, so we have not actually engaged or paid StanTech yet. When you ordered a comment, asked if they had done this yet. They haven't actually provided service or been paid yet. We're simply looking at that $1 million agreement, about 10% to 12% of that was a focused review of the Dresser site. Now, it had a parachute clause. If they found a flaw, we could reject it. We had to pay them again a little bit more money to look at another site. So that's the difference between this. We're slicing that upfront out. So in the end, do you do this? You go back, you find a site? In the end, will you have maybe paid more, I guess? But it's what you want in the return for your investment with their services. But I just wanted to be clear, they haven't actually done any, there's no, there's nothing that's already been done, it won't be.
Zach? So you mean they've done this out of the goodness of their heart?
No, they haven't. There's no, there's been no agreement yet with them.
Yeah, but that's, yeah, and that's before the council tonight. But my understanding from Marcus and others is that they've been doing preliminary work for us.
Just in their review and research of the site? Yeah, so we have not actually?
Just in costing it, what would it cost for them to review a site of this magnitude?
So we haven't stroked them a check at all?
No, you haven't stroked them a check. There's no physical.
Because there's no contract.
Yeah, we do have Mr. Tim.
Yeah. Yeah.
So.
Actually, if you could come to the microphone just so we have it for public record, that'd
Thank you, Mayor. Tim Holdman with Engineering Enterprises Incorporated. Our firm is part of the StanTech team. We will be doing the site, design and layout. And we have, over the year and a half that we've been talking to the city, looked at those first three sites. And we did preliminary evaluations as part of our preparation for our interview with the city. So when we came to the city, we had basic understanding of the three sites. And at that time, we had evaluated that the Dresser site was the best. And that's kind of why we moved in that direction. So I think that's what the confusion might be. We did that as part of our presentation during the selection process.
Gotcha.
Yeah, that's all I wanted to clarify, that we haven't actually spent money yet. That's what I was driving at.
I love hearing that.
And just to address Alderwoman Morris' comment, part of this first phase is something called environmental justice and they do look at those sort of things, impacts to communities, including pollution or traffic or other off-putting influences to an existing neighborhood.
Further comments? Alderman Faver?
Well, as we, as we talk about electrification, actually hybrid, I would say, I mean, it's going to take longer than you think. If we think it's going to take two years, it's going to take five. If we say five years, it's going to take 10. So eventually, we'll have a hybrid fleet, we'll have compressed natural gas, could be electric, might be hydrogen, who knows, you know, what's going to happen. So, yes, we do need to, we, you know, so I guess in terms of environmental impact from the diesel trucks or from the diesel buses today, that needs to be a consideration for the location in the immediate with the plan that in the future, it's going to go green. So, yeah, I, you know, we don't want to put it right in the middle of downtown DeKalb with the thought that it's going to be green from the get-go. It's not going to be green.
City manager, do you have what you need? We, if I call roll, this passes, we move forward.
Yeah, we'll, if you support this, we'll engage them and execute the contract.
Yep, and there is a possibility that they come back and say the Dresser Road site is the best site.
Okay, but didn't, sorry.
Yeah, no, go ahead. Sorry, Alderman, Alderwoman Larson.
But Bill did bring up a thing that we could make amended motion where we could just say, they said that Dresser Road was the best a while ago. We've had more discussion with new people. Could we just change it and say, let's just limit it to Dresser and go from there? Is that what you proposed, Bill, that we, that's a step we could do?
Yeah, it is what I proposed.
And we could do that to answer your question, yes.
Okay.
I want to clarify that with their new feedback, that my original statement, which was that the worst outcome would be that we'd go to Dresser Road, I don't any longer believe that that's the worst outcome because it sounds like we have not financially invested yet in this pursuit. So I think that, you know, we're safe all around if we just execute this contract as is.
City manager, Nicholas?
I think we're paying for it in this contract, to be honest. $264,153 to confirm it.
Yeah, so no matter what we're spending, even if we said, just focus on Dresser, that money is going to be spent.
We're paying for it.
Right. Okay, so you're comfortable with accepting this?
I am.
The way it is? And we have a high probability, since they've already recommended Dresser Road is it, that it's going to be Dresser Road. I would just want to, like, some head nods that if that is the case, yes?
But Mayor, excuse me for interrupting, but Alderman McAdams and Perkins, I think, made a good point. If you want to see the work, we'll produce the work. I think that was the intent of this resolution from the beginning. Here's, here's what we thought about, two other sites plus the Dresser Road. You will get that. That's what's in, that's what's expected here. And I'm saying that tonight in front of you and you're saying, you're saying, yes, that's what we want and that's what we will get.
Yep. And the clarification that I just wanted to make sure that if they come back and it's Dresser Road, are we good? I don't want to go down this path and we're just going to vote down Dresser Road, which we already know is probably the best site, so. I got a, that's a kind of a nod. There's a yes. Okay, it looks like we got some, what about Smith? Can I call you out? What? Oh, you want to talk, I thought you were like, yes, I would vote for that. Alderwoman Larson, sorry.
I'm sorry, call me the devil's advocate. So let's say they come back with two other sites and one of them is now their number one and it's going to cost us millions to buy it or however much, however many acres. So as a council, we're okay that it's more about getting the right spot, whether it's land we own or that we have to buy.
I think we could weigh that when it's brought to us, yeah. And then we'll make that decision if we want to spend the extra money for that spot or what. Okay. All right, roll call.
Faver?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven i's, zero n's.
Resolution passes. All right, resolution number seven, resolution 2021-075, authorizing an agreement with DeKalb Corn Classic and Kishawaki Sunrise Rotary Club for the 2021 DeKalb Corn Classic 5K, 10K and Taste of DeKalb events on September 26, 2021. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderwoman Morris. City manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, there's no competition here. It's one of a kind and it's a great, great event and we're supporting this disagreement with the Corn Classic and the Kishawaki Sunrise Rotary Club.
Comments, questions, council? Hearing none, roll call?
Morris?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Faver?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven i's, zero n's.
Resolution passes. All right. At this one, I'm going to have to recuse myself according to state statute because resolution number eight, the AIP request, AIP request happens within the TIF district and I do own property within the TIF district in question. So Alderman Faver, if you could take over, I would appreciate it.
Resolution 2021-076, authorizing an architectural improvement program, AIP grant for 151 North Fourth Street in the amount of $25,000. Make it a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderwoman Morris, seconded by Alderwoman Larson. City manager.
Thank you. The background, I think, is adequate to the task tonight. The petitioner, Mr. Patterson, has purchased the Wright Building at the corner of Locust and Fourth. And the building is an older building. It's been something of a landmark in DeKalb for a long time and it needs, it's tired, but it's got good bones, needs some upgrading. For a long time had apartments on the second level and the first level's been commercial and they've had an underground garage. I think it's the only one of its kind, at least of that size, in DeKalb. And it's still operating and adequate, but again, needs a little bit of TLC. So Mr. Patterson is well aware of this task before him. He's aware that he may spend before all is said and done, half a million dollars on the building to bring it up to code and beyond code to what he thinks would be a more marketable space. And he's applied for some assistance. TIF III, which includes this parcel, as you know, is a smaller operating TIF, making about 400, 450,000 a year rather than 7.2 million. And this year, our allocations have all been committed except for some of the, about half of the AIP program. And so he's asked for a number of things. The total of all of them comes up to, well, actually, well, well beyond 25,000, but the total of all that's qualified under our program allocation maximum of 25,000 would get him to that mark, 25,000. We support it. We're pleased with his eagerness to work with us and that he's looking to work on a building that needs, needs some work.
Any comments? Yes?
I just think it's great that a DeKalb guy is back and investing in his hometown.
And he's already started working, I saw, putting in time down there. I think you're making some headway, so.
Roll call?
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Six i's, zero n's.
All right. So moving on to resolution number nine, resolution 2021-077, authorizing an agreement with the DeKalb Community Unit School District, number 428, to provide emergency medical services for DeKalb High School home football games for the 2021-2022 school year. Can I get a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved. Second.
Moved by Alderman McAdams, seconded by Alderman Perkins. City manager.
I think it's very straightforward. We provide ambulance backup for, well, not backup, and we provide a frontline ambulance that's there in case something happens at a home football game and we're happy to do that. We charge less than our overtime rate to be there and we recommend you approve this agreement.
Hearing none, roll call?
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Faver?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven i's, zero n's.
Resolution passes. Moving on to agenda item K, ordinances, second reading, we have none. Agenda item L, ordinances, first reading. Agenda item number one, ordinance 2021-031, amending the fiscal year-end December 31st, 2021 budget. Can I get a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderwoman Larson, seconded by Alderwoman Morris. City manager.
Thank you, Mayor. This particular ordinance addresses a number of budget revisions that are consistent with our recent council direction. We probably wouldn't bother you with these except they're just some large swings of dollars and they have grown out of conversation particularly about the American Recovery Plan and also a couple of these are consistent with the direction just from last week's council and FAC meeting. The first, and there is a narrative here, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. The chart on page seven encompasses all of the proposed changes and the largest of those is to bring in some of the ARP dollars that can justifiably be used to reimburse the general fund for city hiring freezes back in 2020. And that's part of the ARP program for revenue loss. And in addition, on page, the top of page eight, we detailed that one point, almost 1.4 million dollars in more detail by, by position. And you saw the same charts last week and you've been aware that we're looking to bring in that money for about a month now. And here it is. It also allows us to do some budget planning for FY22 more specifically. Also, we are, in filling these positions and in doing other things, for the last couple of years, we've asked a lot of our human resources department. It's been two full-time equivalents, but really one full-timer and two part-timers. And we are, as you know, we have accelerated process to fill holes from retirements and other openings in both the fire and the police department. Michelle Anderson, who's in the audience tonight, stand up for a minute, yep. I give you applause, but I'm not there yet, has been working very hard. Michelle Branding, who's one of the part-time people, does our onboarding and does other things too, is, has been working very hard and we have a part-timer now. It's just not enough. We can't keep up. And while she's doing this, she's also the, and that department is also the, they're the good hands people for all city benefit programs. So any retiree, any active person can come in any day. We want to treat them well and give them all the time they need. Meanwhile, there's a stack of things that have to be processed, whether it's with the fire and police commissioners or just generally to go to the market and see who might want to open, apply for an opening. And so it's gone as long as I've been here and it's gone even longer than that. And I thought it was time, we have a little bit of latitude now and I'm thinking ahead as well, to increase to three full-time equivalents. So we're not, we're not throwing bodies at this, but we're trying to modestly enhance our ability to do things in a timely fashion. And this isn't just the hiring process. It's all, and I mentioned the benefit process and the questions and so forth. People are making career decisions and they're going to leave for whatever reason, whether it's retirement or they're moving their family or they've found another job that they like better. There's a process that should happen and we just, it's very hard to do that well. And there should be a separation process that's as friendly and constructive as that onboarding process if all works well. And so how are we going to do that with one and a half or two full-time, but really one full-time person? So that's, that's, to me, as important as what I previously said about bringing in the money, but now here's how it comes to bear in terms of the services we provide. Our internal customers as well as external customers who are asking about the services we provide. And in that process, in the upgrade, I've been promoting Michelle Anderson to the full-time HR director position, which she has been operating as for 10 years, but never really been given the authority or the recognition for. Also, just a couple of cleanup things. You authorized a film contract. The filming's tomorrow, by the way, but wanted to clean that up and hopefully it goes well and we'll show you, you'll be the judge and we'll hopefully see a good product. We'll start at NIU in the morning and then end up downtown for most of the afternoon. Also, there is a settlement of an easement dispute between us and ComEd, which is explained here. There's a, an area that we have, Make On Drive actually goes under the large power lines that go on the west side of Peace, going north and south from the tollway up to 38. Make On Drive for a long time has gone under those. I guess there was never a proper easement that was agreed by the, we thought we had one, but ComEd says, no. We've been back and forth, back and forth, the two. We've been back and forth, back and forth, the two and a half years. This is a settlement that we've come up with. I think Zach Gill, as I did in the background, for negotiating this. So, it's, we started, it was much higher and this is, I think, as good as we can get. This allows us now for certainty when we're attracting companies to Park Eighty-Eight to let them know that you can actually traverse Make 'Em Drive, although it's happening as we speak. There's a truck down there, probably. We also received notification that, and thanks to the Fire Administration for helping with, and others, with the grant that, of over quarter million dollars to help us purchase new SCBA, the breathing apparatus that firemen use, for all the obvious reasons. This gets us a little better and halfway through the number that we have to replace. The ones we have now are not going to meet the certifications that are necessary. And our local share is twenty-five thousand, so we'll enjoy that. And there's a place in these proposed revisions that would pick that up. Finally, as you well know, we had to expend more money on the South Water Tower painting and repair project. If you've been down there, I think you'll be impressed, the work is done inside, Brian, if I'm not mistaken. And the exterior now, I believe the draping is pretty much done. They've took all the paint down, the bare metal, all the way around the outside and have put, I think, a primer coat on, through, all around the tower. So, that's what these are. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Counsel members, questions? Comments? Alderwoman Morris.
Just real quick, I just want to thank you for the level of detail and transparency involved here. And I realize we've seen this before, but I really appreciate you putting it in ordinance for us to be able to focus on it. It's really great. Thanks.
Other comments? Hearing none. Roll call.
Larson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes.
Seven i's, zero n's.
Ordinance passes.
Mayor?
Yes.
I wonder if we could do this on second reading so we can actually make it so?
Absolutely. I'd take a motion to approve this on second reading.
So moved.
Second.
So moved by Alderman McAdams, seconded by Alderman Favor. Questions? Comments? Roll call.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes.
Seven i's, zero n's.
The ordinance passes on second reading. City manager. All right, moving on to item number two.
Who seconded that?
Favor?
Yeah.
Okay. Alderman Favor.
Sorry.
All right, item number two, ordinance two zero two one dash zero three two, authorizing a zoning map amendment from the GC General Commercial District and the MFR two, multifamily residential district, to the PD dash C, Planned Development Commercial District, and approval of a preliminary development plan for twelve twenty-one West Lincoln Highway, Blue Ridge LLC, twelve twenty-one. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved. Second.
Moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Adams. City manager.
Thank you. The background describes a development that we've discussed in other sittings in the last couple of years. Mr. Doby, the petitioner, is looking to redevelop some property that he and partners own across the street from Fatty's Pub and Grill, looking to rezone that general commercial district and also to do a preliminary plan and that's identified. And there's quite a lot of background that our planner, Dan Olson, has provided to you. But specifically, there are a few things that Mr. Doby has added since the last time the council looked at this, when they approved a couple of resolutions in the fall of 2020. And one is to allow for the construction of about a six thousand square foot building to create a packaged liquor store on that east side of, or, excuse me, the north side of thirty-eight. And it would be a drive-through. There would also be some video gaming and the possibility of a couple two-bedroom apartments on the second floor. There would also be a storage area for his catering business. So, in other words, what's mainly changing here is this building that he wants to add and feels that that would help make it for a more successful operation. So, Planning Commission reviewed this, Planning Zoning Commission, excuse me, reviewed this on August sixteenth and by a vote of four to zero, approved and recommended this for your consideration. So, we support the Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation.
Counsel. Alderwoman Morris.
I have a question. I'm curious if the video gaming is going to replace the video gaming that's currently at Fatty's or if this will be in addition.
In addition.
In addition.
I guess I'm curious on counsel's thoughts on that specifically, because.
Alderwoman Larson.
I might have this wrong, but are there licenses that if it's a standalone gaming place versus gaming in a bar? So, if this is a standalone, does it have to have a license to do that? Or is it going to be part of the liquor store?
It's an ancillary door liquor license, but whether, that's the question.
Does video gaming as a separate tenant?
There's a separate space in the building beyond the liquor store. That'd be separate. And the standalone, there's a maximum of ten. But Mr. Doby has, we passed a resolution last year that gave him that license contingent upon him getting the zoning authority, which he's going through now. So, but it'd be a separate tenant. There'd be a wall between the two.
So, you're saying that we already approved that license?
It was a resolution that approved a contingent upon, so Ryan's, one of those, the zoning authority, which he's going through.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay. No other comments? Questions? All right, hearing none. Roll call.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes.
Seven i's, zero n's.
Ordinance passes. Now, I know on here, petitioner Jeff Doby has requested the council consideration on a second reading. That is the question, is there a motion to approve this for second reading?
So moved.
Second.
So moved by Alderman McAdams, seconded by Alderwoman Morris. Discussion? Comment? Okay, hearing none.
McAdams.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes.
Seven zero.
Second reading passes. All right, moving on to item number three, ordinance two zero two one dash zero three three, approving the final plat of subdivision and plat of easement of the Chicago West Business Center, Phase Two, TC Pursuit Services Incorporated, DeKalb Three Four Three LLC. Can I have a motion to bring this to the floor?
So moved. Second.
Moved by Alderwoman Larson, seconded by Alderwoman Morris. City manager.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a very straightforward thing. You approved the preliminary plan already. The final plat, as you know, provides the opportunity for transfer of property, if that is one of the goals. And it usually follows as the design work proceeds and the definition of the lot is clear. And that's what's before you tonight. It's a one-lot, final subdivision plat and a plat of easement that allows for work to be done in and near our right-of-way, or our public right-of-way, which is Creco Road in this case. And the petitioner is Project Barb. Mr. Krasinski, who is involved in this project, is in the audience and I thank him for his gracious patience tonight. If there are any questions, be happy to answer them, but the Planning and Zoning Commission took this up also last week while we were in our meeting with FAC and by a vote of four to zero, recommended your approval, and we support their recommendation.
Questions or comments from counsel? All right, roll call.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes.
Seven i's, zero n's.
All right, ordinance on first reading passes. There is a request to go ahead and waive or approve second reading right now, so I would take a motion to bring second reading before us.
So, second.
Moved by Alderman Perkins, seconded by Alderwoman Morris. Any comments or questions? Hearing none. Roll call.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes.
Seven i's, zero n's.
Second reading passes. Mr. Krasinski, congratulations and once again, thank you. It's been great working with you. All right, item number four, ordinance two zero two one dash zero three four, approving a purchase and sale agreement with Blackhawk Road LLC to transfer a portion of nine twelve Edgebrook Drive to eleven fourteen Blackhawk Drive. Can I have a motion to bring it before the floor?
So moved.
I'll do move by Alderman Favor and seconded by Alderwoman Morris. Does that work?
That's fine.
All right. City manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I would say that this is a matter that is to address zealous, maybe it's more appropriate to say overzealous code enforcement from four years ago, almost five. The details are in the background. It's pretty straightforward. There was a building that had long been a fraternity house. It was vacant for a while and this one fraternity was moved out. And a couple investors decided, let's open this up again, let's get it working again. And at that time, and for the people who were working here at the time, that seemed to invoke what I would call a Carthagenian enforcement and upgrading of standards that were beyond those of any other fraternity house and sorority house in the area. They had to install elevator. Elevators are good, but, you know, equal and consistent enforcement is important. Also, had to bring the parking area up to all the latest standards, not the standards that were in existence at the time. And I understand, trying to encourage, but, you know, at the time, we had also imposed the Safe Streets Program, so there was a need for more off-street parking. But in this case, it took up all of the green space on this site. And so now there's no green space. Fraternities do frivolous things like tugs, forgive me, fraternity people looking in. But there was no room to do that. In fact, that was like tug central, I guess. I don't know. It's been a long time since I was. And anyway, the point is, just coincidentally, though the city happily, to everybody in the neighborhood, tore down nine twelve Edgebrook. And there's some space there. There's plenty of room. Ultimately, I think we have to bring this back to the council, it's your choice on what future use would be, but I assume we want to keep that as park space or green space or something. We're not going to allow more multifamily building going on there. And so they wondered if some part of that could be used for green space, so they have some yard space to do things that forty-five persons in a fraternity house might want to do. We are concerned with the proximity to what might eventually be a park, that there be some screening, whether it be a very dense kind of arbor vida separation or an attractive fence. And that at most, what they have asked, they had to get rid of their handy hut that held their gas-powered lawnmower and other things, so they wanted to have another one. What we've recommended is they have space for a hundred and twenty square foot, so a ten-by-twelve handy hut somewhere in this green space, not proximate to the, not right up against the hedge or the dividing area with the park, but somewhere in that green space. So, that's it. You know, they're living with what happened inside and several hundred thousand dollars that they had to put in just to get this place open again. So, we thought it was a fair deal and we wanted to know if we felt as well.
City council? Well, this definitely feels good, feels right. Just glad, sometimes the small things, right? We've passed a lot of big things here tonight. Sometimes the small things matter just as much, so I'm excited to hopefully pass this in just one second. Roll call.
Morris.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes.
Seven i's, zero n's.
Ordinance passes. Now, this is just first reading, so we can do second reading, right?
Well, you can do second at your pleasure anytime on ordinance.
Yeah.
Unless you want to hold it over, that would be agreeable. We, you know, the next move is to talk to bring you back a proposal that might involve the Park District and what could be done there before the fall.
Will that impact what we're doing here with them?
Well, I, that's up to you. I think it's important that we move along, but.
Well, then, I would seek a motion to pass this on second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderwoman Morris, seconded by Alderman Favor. Roll call.
Larson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Second reading passes. You don't have to stay, so you're more than welcome to leave at this point. To be no offense on our end, thank you for working with us, gentlemen. All right, moving on to number five, ordinance two zero two one dash zero three five, approving a purchase and sale agreement with one one dash one zero two seven Hunter Hillcrest LLC for the Hunter Hillcrest property, one zero one one through one zero two seven Hillcrest Drive. Can I get a motion to bring this to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman McAdams, seconded by Alderwoman Morris. City manager.
Thank you, Mayor. We're at that point, which we've been aiming for, for a while now, a couple months back in May. We notified Mr. Rockner and Jerry Ashman, who was then representing Hunter Properties, that the city was exercising its option, according to a settlement agreement that we had, to purchase the Hunter Hillcrest property. And that's at ten eleven to ten twenty-seven Hillcrest Drive. And the two parties then were obliged, according to the settlement agreement, to each suggest a appraiser and failing to reach concord on the appraiser, the appraisers would then pick a third. That was done. That appraiser, Value Pros, has now delivered to what they feel is a fair market value of this building. And the number was one million, one hundred eighty-five thousand. I pointed out in the background that the parcel was last transferred by warranty deed back in 2014 for a purchase price of one million, one hundred sixty-two thousand, five hundred dollars. And we feel that the appraisal was fairly arrived at. The appraisal obviously touched on the building and also the value of the land and the parking lot. And the building has about thirty-three thousand square feet with nine commercial units on the first level, fourteen apartments on the second level. The purchase of this property has been a high priority project in this community. It was one of the cornerstones of the Antiguan North Plan. I quoted from the plan in the background. That was a 2018 plan. We've had many occasions in this room to touch on that and also to talk about the Hunter Properties and some of their holdings, including this one. Mayor Barnes, and you all have very actively supported our AGN plan goals and that includes redevelopment in Hillcrest Blackhawk area, and we've talked a lot about that. We invested heavily in the removal of the old campus cinemas and we've been talking about coming around the corner and doing the same here. So, we, at the staff level, feel it's consistent with your previous guidance and direction the staff level, feel it's consistent with your previous guidance and direction to support this particular ordinance. And we recommend it on both readings.
Counsel, Alderman McAdams?
Progress takes a long time. And at long last, we're going to take a first and definitive step towards fixing the biggest problem in the city. And I urge my colleagues to vote yes on this matter.
Further comments? Hearing none, roll call.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes.
Motion carries, seven i's, zero n's.
Wonderful.
Move to waive second reading and approve?
Absolutely. Oh, beautiful. I have a motion by Alderman Morris and a second by Alderman Favor to waive second reading. Discussion? Let's get after it. All right, roll call.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes.
Seven zero.
Second reading passes. I love how we're so anxious we're all getting ahead of it. That's great. All right, moving on to item number six, ordinance 2021-036 amending Chapter 51 Traffic Schedule B through Street Stop Intersections and Yield Intersections to establish a stop condition for both Alpha Court East and Alpha Court West as they intersect Williams Way. Can I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Moved by Alderman Favor, seconded by Alderman McAdams. City Manager.
This is a matter that comes to you recommended by our city engineer, who is usually the point of contact for people who are concerned about traffic control or the lack of traffic control. And there is a area in Eden's Garden where there were concern at two different intersections on Williams Way. And Zach Gil has reviewed these and recommended the establishment of stop signs rather than yield intersections. So I support that, and I hope you will too.
Counsel, comments, questions? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes.
Seven i's, zero n's.
Ordinance passes. Want to leave this for the next agenda, just in case anyone wants to come out, or do you guys want to pass it?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, school is on. School buses are stopping here. I didn't say I didn't want to do this.
I would take a motion to waive second reading from the council?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderwoman Morris, seconded by Alderman Perkins. Roll call.
McAdams.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes.
Seven i's, zero n's.
Second reading passes. Excellent. All right, moving on to reports and communications, Agenda Item M, number one, council member reports. You want to kick us off, Alderwoman Morris?
No report.
Sorry, Alderwoman Larson?
No report.
Alderman Smith?
The one-way street on Sixth Street looks like it's working out very well. Zach, are we going to be striping it? Do we, anything? I know I should probably ask you before you put you on the spot, but it looks like people are all facing the right direction and making parking on their own. But I'm just curious that that was something in the plan.
Yes, we did that in conjunction with our annual street maintenance project. Since we'll be on First Street, I believe, next week, striping that. So that was the cheapest way. So we got the one-way signs up, and we will swing down there, I think, next week and stripe it up.
Perfect. Thank you, sir.
Awesome. Alderman Perkins?
No report.
Alderman McAdams?
No report.
Alderman Favor?
I'm happy to drive down First Street in Taylor. Nice and smooth. They're nice streets. I did want to say something. In the community, you know, sometimes your neighbor's lawn gets a little long. They might need some assistance. They might be traveling. You never know. If it's possible, be neighborly. Go ask them if you can mow their lawn or help them out. Check on your neighbor. It's an opportunity to get to know them better if you don't know them yet today. And then if it becomes an issue, you can call your alderman and we'll get that taken care of for you as well. Thanks.
Awesome. I just had a few things. Just was at a belonging meeting just the other day. That group, just the Belonging Council continues to move forward. A lot of great discussions. And it's mostly around just kind of co-creating a decalb that everyone, no matter where they're from, whether it's someone that's, you know, grew up here and lived their entire life here, to someone that's new from the city, or a student that decided to stay. It's just all about how can we make sure that we really create a community that, just like it says, everyone belongs. We've seen it on the buses. We're seeing it more and more. And I'm just really excited about how that initiative has really taken off. And there's a lot of great people, hardworking people, that carry water on that council. And it's just been a great experience to be a part of. Second, went to an open house at the Islamic Center this weekend. Next time that happens, I highly recommend you all should go. Great facility, great people, amazing food. So that was a lot of fun, just to, one, educate myself a little bit on just another section of our community. Again, everyone belongs, right? And be able to see the mosque. I'd never been in it, and it was really cool to get a tour and hang out there. Also, participated in NIU bus tours. So that's great to do that every year where, as new students come to our community with their parents, we put them on a bus and we give them a tour of Decalb and show them all the cool places. Where do they get groceries? Where do they get prescriptions? And we even had a mom and daughter that drove all the way down from Wisconsin two days early because they wanted to be on the bus tour, to get the bus tour. So it was really cool that the city was able to participate in doing those and helping welcome our new parents and new students to the community. Enhancement Commission meeting, talk about a great group of people doing some amazing things. That's the Community Enhancement Commission, really focused on art. And they had Dean Castle out, as well as, I can't remember the gentleman's name, but I believe he's in charge of the music department, really starting to talk about how can we have more live performing arts downtown Decalb and around Decalb, as well as public sculptures, new lighting. They're coming up with a lot of amazing ideas. And Zach's been great being receptive and getting us some information that we can share on how do you color streets and sidewalks. So it's just awesome to see a commission that is really aligned with some of the initiatives that we're doing right now. Last two things, vaccinations. Our infection rate continues to rise. I'm really worried. We're going to get to a point where we're going to be mandating masks, which we all should be wearing masks as much as possible now, that businesses could shut down. And in many ways, there's a pretty simple solution to that. And that means just all of us going out and get vaccinated. So I can't say enough how much I'm going to encourage everyone. Go out, get vaccinated. If you're not going to do it just for yourself, do it for all of those around you as well. That's what it means to be a contributing member of society. All right, lastly, media agenda. Nice work, counsel. I absolutely love working with you all doing the business of the city. So I just want to say thanks. With that, I would take...
Mayor Barnes?
Oh, yep.
Two things. May I make a quick report?
On city clerk business?
Yes.
Yes.
I have an apology to make to the members of the council and the residents of the city. For the last several weeks, I have allowed myself to become too preoccupied with other things that have been going on in my life. And it's allowed my quality of work to decline and for deadlines to be missed. So I will be taking the next couple of days to get into the office, go back through all of the minutes that have been previously rejected, make all of the requisite corrections. And they will be submitted to Ruth for your approval at the meeting by the time Corn Fest opens on Thursday.
Glad to hear.
Also, Corn Fest is this week, I believe.
Yes, it is. That's a good point.
Maybe of interest to residents.
So, yeah, Corn Fest is our big festival happening this weekend, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. If you haven't gone to it, I'd highly recommend you come out and see. I'm sure all of us are going to be there enjoying another great festival in our community. All right, moving on to executive session, Agenda Item N, there is none. And then I would take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Morris, seconded by Alderwoman Morris, seconded by Alderman Favor. Roll call.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes.
Seven i's, zero n's.
We are adjourned.